The council on December 5th, 2023 to order at 3:01 PM. Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any agenda item or during the hearing of visitors portion of the agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation, regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation and staff can distribute those to council. And if you're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on a work session item? Seeing no one is registered, we will recess the regular session and convene a work session with a report from our city manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council, to the public as well. We have arrived at our second-to-last meeting of 2023. So one more to go. I have a jokester up here at the dais. I'm not sure if we're going to be able to work this out with Assistant Chief Ginch up here. But I have it. Do you have it?
I was wondering if something changed.
All right. Jennifer's up here rolling. But with this agenda, we've officially brought you more than 1,000 items this year. A thousand resolutions, ordinances, lots of great work, and definitely appreciative of the staff that are working those items. From an agenda changes standpoint, we do not have any changes on the agenda today, but I would like to point out, we have special motion language at your places for resolutions 1,021 and 1,022. Each of those will be pulled from the consent agenda since they involve requests to work through the condemnation process. Next, I wanted to cover a couple of employee recognitions and organizational changes, and I actually have a little bit longer of a report on these items than I typically do. I want to start with just a real hearty thank you to city staff that worked to put on Waco Wonderland, the three-day holiday festival over the weekend. The Parks Crew and the rest of the team members did an outstanding job, as they typically do, to really kick off the holiday season in the right manner with thousands of folks coming downtown to create memories and hopefully do a little shopping at our great collection of small businesses.
Bradley, if I may add on top of that, the float that we were in Saturday, I want to thank Jonathan Cook and his staff and Michelle, Michelle Hicks and city secretary staff. For the float. And my kids had so much fun throwing the candy out. They were so excited, especially my two-year-old. And I was more excited about seeing Aaron and Aubrey excited and all the kids along the parade route. We got to ride with Santa. So we had a lot of fun. I was the only council member that rode on the float. Everybody else walked.
And respect, man. I mean, you know, you earned that seat.
So anyway, thank you to everybody that had something to do with the parade Saturday. Jonathan, your staff is awesome. Michelle, your staff is awesome. And council, you're awesome because we were all there Saturday. So thank you all.
Yeah, I'll just say, I think this event gets better and better every year. There's more and more people at both Friday night tree lighting and fireworks and parade every year, and it really is fun to see our community come together in this way. And it doesn't happen by accident. It's the strategic work of Jonathan and Megan Davis and Michelle and all of our city team. And I know there's a multi, many departments that play a role in this. So thank you to all of the hard work that goes into these sort of things because quality of life matters. And when people think about the holiday season in Waco, we got a lot of great, exciting, fun things happening. So I'm really proud of our community.
DZ, thank you for the security and holding up the traffic for us Saturday as well. I don't want to leave anybody out. I'm sure the fire department had something to do with Saturday here. So anyway.
It probably takes a village to pull that event off. They do a great job. We do have partners also and our friends at City Center Waco and others.
City Center Waco, the Peds, yep.
Yep, so team effort. Speaking of team, I have a few organizational updates I wanted to provide to the council and public today. We've got some recent new hires as well as interim director placements that I wanted to introduce. And first, I'll start with Tom Bock. I should have had everybody sit together because I'm going to be scanning the audience here. Okay, yeah, Tom Bock over here on the left. A familiar face to the council and the community. He's worked with us 14 or 15? Have you hit 15 yet? Okay, 14 years at the city over in the Parks Department. Just recently, I asked Tom to take on a new role as Director of Strategic Initiatives, working in my office. As the council's aware and probably the public too, Tom has really established himself as a creative thinker, a really great communicator, and an adept project manager. And those are things that I saw an opportunity for him to work on in my office. So in his new role, Tom will be leading up our downtown redevelopment project as well as providing leadership on a few other projects as well and other duties as assigned he's learned very quickly what that looks like.
That's the setup, bro.
Yeah, so I've got five updates. So do y'all want to save your applause until the end?
Sure, we'll save it.
And save your comments if you want? Is that okay? All right, next up, scanning the audience. Where's my new zoo director? I know he's here. Oh my gosh, right front and center. I'd like to welcome and introduce Brendan Wiley, who's in his second week now here in Waco. He is starting his role as the Director at the Cameron Park Zoo. Brendan joins us from Topeka, Kansas, where he served for 13 years, I believe, as the Director of the Zoo in Topeka. During his time there, he had remarkable success thanks to him and his team. Huge increases in visitation as well as managed quite a few projects. I think he had more than $20 million of capital improvements that he saw on the grounds there. He also helped them with reaccreditation with the ACA, which wasn't a given when he started 13 years prior. Welcome to Waco, Brendan, and I'm excited to see what you do at the zoo and how it flourishes under your leadership. Before I move away from the zoo, though, I think it's important because for quite a few months, Dwayne Hills, who's back in the back, back right, served as our interim director at the zoo. He moved up from his role as deputy director and served his interim, and he did that very well. And I just wanted to say a special thanks to Dwayne. I know that was a growing experience for you, but I really appreciate the leadership you provided. We have had a few retirements this fall on our leadership team, and we're starting to search for new directors in several spots. So I wanted to introduce now a couple of interim directors who stepped in to lead departments while I do search process, executive search processes in fire and library as well as economic development. So first, let's start with library. A name that might be familiar to some in Waco has returned, and that's Melissa Vosmer over sitting next to Dwayne. Melissa returns to Waco after a few years away and is going to serve as our interim library director. She served as an assistant city manager back in the 1990s. She also held titles such as deputy city manager and even interim city manager for a time. And since her time here in Waco, she's served as several city manager roles. I think Angel Fire, is that right? I don't have it right in front of me, but I think there was one other.
City of San Antonio.
San Antonio, that's the one I was thinking of, Assistant City Manager in San Antonio. So she's been, had a great career after she left Waco, and we're very pleased to have her back helping us out in library. Council for Your Benefit Resolution 993 addresses Melissa's appointment and the contract through SGR that we are placing her through. The next interim appointment, I think, will show up on the screen here, and that is Jeremy Pacina, a name that's familiar to the council as well. I've asked Jeremy to step in, given Kent George's recent retirement in economic development, asked him to step in to the role of interim economic development director. Jeremy's been with the city coming up on five years, predominantly in the IT department, but recently joined economic development. Unfortunately, he's not here today with us, but if you haven't met Jeremy out in the crowd, you should. He's an up-and-comer, and I'm very pleased that he was willing to step up into this role. And finally, we have an item on your agenda tonight, Resolution 994, confirming the appointment of our interim fire chief, Kevin McGee. Another blast from the past, right? Kevin, Kevin, if many don't remember, served as interim fire chief in 2020 for us. And, you know, I'm a little, I need to find some wood to knock on. I'm a little worried because right after we appointed Kevin the last time, what came? A global pandemic. So hopefully that's, you know, hopefully that's not what happens this time. But no, Chief McGee comes to us with 39 years of experience in a variety of regional, state, and national emergency management and fire services roles. He served as chief in Prince William County, Virginia for 13 years. And since he left Waco in the interim role, he's continued to work as a consultant and college instructor as well. And I just want to say, welcome back, chief. Look forward to working with you. And I think it's time to give some applause to these great people.
Yeah, I just want to say that this is a great, we have a great team of people in the city of Waco. Our staff is really what makes our community be what it is and all the good work that comes from our cities because of the dedication of our city staff. So thankful for these new members of our team. Some of them will be here for just a little bit. Some of them will be here for the long haul, hopefully. So just on behalf of the city council, it's really meaningful to us that you're jumping in. We appreciate your dedication to your work and look forward to getting to know you better.
All right, council. So we have one public hearing today. Galen Price will present public hearing 981 on residential tax abatements during the business session here in a little while. We have 42 resolutions on the agenda. I'm going to highlight just a couple of them, starting with Resolution 985, which approves a Chapter 380 agreement with RAD Waco, R-A-D Waco, for the Hotel Herringbone project. I think we got some imagery we'll show. This is a pretty exciting renovation project, and we're going to show a few images of it. The agreement that's on your agenda proposes a 75% sales tax reimbursement for the sales tax generated at Hotel Herringbone over a course of six years, not to exceed $385,000. As a reminder, council has previously approved an agreement for TIF funding for this unique container project. I think it was back in August of 2022. The agreement on your agenda today, though, contemplates the addition of a rooftop bar and event space to the project. Do we have one more image of that? I think we may. These are interior renderings. That's it, Ryan? Okay, okay. Well, they're a great follow on Instagram and Facebook. They're tracking all their renovations, and the project will include also a rooftop bar component that I believe you can see the silos from, if I'm not, if I'm remembering correctly. Second highlight is Resolution 996, which approves the purchase of a 2023 heavy rescue truck for fire department and related equipment from Metro Fire Apparatus Specialists in an amount not to exceed $1.498 million. And there's the image. We'll actually put some logos on that thing. It'll look even better with our Waco Fire logos on it. This rescue truck that we're proposing to purchase tonight will replace a 2010 rescue truck and trailer that's substantially undersized to meet the current mission of our fire services. And we'll move that undersized unit into reserve status. Upon approval this evening, hopefully, the purchase and design process will start, and we anticipate it will take almost two years to receive this unit into Waco.
Wow.
Yeah, quite a long lead time, and those lead times on large apparatus are getting longer, not shorter.
I'll just, I'll comment on this, and it's, there's something about buying a fire truck this close to Christmas. Really warms my heart. But anyway, we've got a great fire department, and I want to make sure they always have the proper resources. We have purchased, what, 12 fire engines over the last three years now, or 13? So I think it's important to, again, have these guys properly equipped. And interim chief and you guys over here that are here today, ACM Holt, appreciate all the work and your leadership. We've got one of the ISO number one, one of the best-rated fire departments in the country. So keep up the good work. But yeah, I love buying fire trucks. One of the funnest parts of being a council member is buying these things.
Definitely agree with that. All right. Our next highlight is Resolution 1008, which approves a contract for engineering and special services with Quiddity Engineering for the South 12th Street Realignment and Reconstruction Schematic and Design Study in a total authorization amount not to exceed $1.4 million. The South 12th Street project, you're seeing the map there, is one of the five streets, the South 12th Street project is one of the five streets in our Capacity Street Program. And this contract would seek to study the alignment of how we bring South 18th Street right by South Waco Library and connect it to South 12th Street and continue that road all the way down to Loop 340. This project's definitely a priority of the city councils due to its ability to connect LaSalle Avenue to a future growth corridor on 12th Street, where we anticipate new households being added on city-owned property in the area. That city-owned property being shown in yellow on your map here. The scope of the study includes the development of a roadway schematic depicting the street's alignment as well as the necessary utility improvements, the right-of-way we need to acquire, a topographic survey, a floodplain analysis, because there is some floodplain in the area, as well as the streetscape improvements such as landscaping and sidewalk that we want to see along this corridor. Our next contract I wanted to highlight is Resolution 1010, which would award a contract to Texas Materials Group for the Clay Avenue, excuse me, the Clay Avenue and 17th Street Rehabilitation Project in an amount not to exceed $7.25 million. This project comes as part of our 2021 Mill and Overlay Phase 4 project, and will have more than three miles worth of mill and overlay and street reconstruction in District 2 and District 4 on Clay Avenue as well as segments of 17th Street. Hopefully, you can see those on the map. They're noted in red on the map on the screen. The base bid includes waterline improvements, ADA improvements for accessibility, as well as sidewalk improvements. We anticipate construction to begin in January of 2024 and be completed by April of 2025. So major street work occurring on this item.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you for that.
There, thanks, council member. We do have seven ordinances on the agenda today. Only one is on first reading, and I'll highlight it here. It's Ordinance 1024, considering an amendment to Ordinance 2023-625, our street maintenance fee ordinance. And the revision is to delay implementation until October of 2024. The original implementation for this ordinance was going to be January of 2024, but we've had some issues with the rollout of this program, particularly on the commercial billing side. To address those issues, I've asked the city team to reassess the billing methodology to ensure the final fee meets the intended goals of the project. There will be a budget impact to the change because we will not be collecting the fee between January and at least October, and we had anticipated some revenue in that time. So we will be bringing forward action items to address the shortfall with a first quarter budget amendment in February. And Mayor and council, that concludes my report, and I'll take any questions you might have of me.
Any questions?
I'll just follow up on that last ordinance. I think it's a good idea to hit pause on this, and I guess we'll talk about it tonight too when we vote on it. But it gives us a little more time to get the science right. It's something new. The calculations are complex, and we're working out the kinks. I think we're being responsive to the community right now and demonstrating an intent to collaborate and nailing down the math. So I think our response was appropriate. At the end of the day, you know, maybe it's the beginning of the day, we're trying to figure out how to pay for nearly $2 billion worth of infrastructure needs. And it's hard to figure out ways to pay for it and how to prioritize it and what can wait and what needs to happen now and what is maintenance and what is, you know, brand-new construction, urban, suburban. So getting that all right, and if we have to hit pause on it for, till the next budget cycle, I applaud the staff here. We'll talk more about it tonight. The only other thing I wanted to bring up in the resolutions was Resolution 23, which is 1004, on the quiet zone stuff, the Quiet Zone Initiative, I should say, where we have pretty much, I think, got four of the crossings. I want to make sure I'm reading this right. We pretty much have four of the crossings. There's 10 altogether. Four of them have sort of been, or five have been approved by Union Pacific. And now we have another four that we're trying to get approved, engineered and approved, and that goes out like another year. And I just want people to know that, hey, we're still trying to get this initiative complete, but I've had experience in my investment banking days of working with a CSX, actually, a major railroad, and it takes time. I mean, we're dealing with Union Pacific. They're not doing anything bad. They're just, they're, they're, they don't have to be in a hurry to get to answer, to respond. So I think we're going as fast as we can. I like the way we're doing on this project. We're staying steady, steady as we go, keeping it tracked, so to speak. And it still seems like it's going to be out there. I know we put fall of 2025, that probably sounds about right. It's two years out, giving us enough time to hear back from UP on those last four stops or crossings. Anyway, good work on that, too.
Thank you, Bradley, for running through this. I just wanted to make mention in Resolution 986 that, you know, we've, we've certainly, I've certainly, we've certainly been committed to strategic development of our community. And whilst we are, we're super excited about getting this project off the ground, if it's not right, it's not right. And I appreciate staff, the work that has been done so far. We go back to the drawing board because our community, especially the community in, this community in District 1, this community in East Waco specifically, deserve the best we can offer in creating and building community. And so I expect that we will begin again quickly because we have a goal. We have a goal in establishing new neighborhoods, bringing new business development, increasing the level of attainable, affordable housing in our community that is, you know, connected to commerce, connected to entertainment opportunities, and we're not going to stop. And just because this particular, you know, these proposals will be rejected, that means, you know, I say it all the time, Jesus said, cast the net on the other side. And so that's what we do. And so I appreciate you all and the diligence that City Management Office Housing, you know, Galen Director Price has done this far. But, you know, we've set our blueprint. We go again.
Yeah, I'd agree with that. I really do appreciate our staff and this council's approach to really trying to ensure that we have community-minded quality development occurring in this part of our city and really do believe that we're going to be able to find someone who is going to fulfill that goal.
I just wanted to add to whatever's been said. This agenda is great, Bradley. Thank you all for putting together all these good resolutions. But I do want to tell you all, I did notice that y'all did award a contract to a small minority construction group, and I appreciate that. I know council has said, let's, let's keep doing that. So thank you for doing that, Bradley and staff.
Any other questions for staff? I did want to note that Councilmember Waterroot is not able to be here today. He's really sick with just a virus. He'll be fine. And.
Fire chief? Josh here is watching at home. He's got some bug and running a fever, and he'll be back with us soon. I know he wishes he was here tonight, but we wish him a swift recovery. The consent agenda includes Resolutions 2023-982 through 1023. Are there any items council would like to remove from the consent agenda? If not, the consent agenda will include Resolution 2023-982 through 1023. The next item on the agenda.
Mayor, will you pull the two, 1021 and 1022?
Oh, sorry, yeah. Except for 1021 and 1022, we'll pull those.
In addition to that, Mayor, even though Councilmember Waterroot is not present, he does have ASIs that he will file, so we'll have to pull those and still vote on them separately.
Okay. We will do that then. The next item on the agenda is Work Session 2023-973 through 977.
All right. Mayor and council, we've got a full slate of work sessions, very informative work sessions. We're going to start off with Nick Sarpy, our Chief Financial Officer, presenting Work Session 973, which is a discussion of fiscal year 2022, 2023, fourth quarter financial investment reports. This is always one to key into because it's the end of the year, and Nick's bringing you a summary of backward kind of look at how we performed. And I think he's going to include some forward-looking guidance as well as we look into the future fiscal year. Nick, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. So as Bradley said, we're here to go over the September or fourth quarter fiscal year 23 financial report. So I just want to preface this report, this is for the budget year-end. So the information presented in the report is not audited financials. We still have to do our year-end close, and we're working through that right now as part of our audit process. There's non-financial data. There's some comparisons, and as I mentioned, it doesn't include accruals. All right, so the general fund, so revenues for the general fund were budgeted at $175.2 million for fiscal year '23. Revenues totaled as of the end of September, $191.7 million, which is almost 10% more than budget. The largest dollar increases that we saw this year were on interest on investments related to the change in market value of the investments as well as the increase in interest rates that we continue to see during the fiscal year. On the expenditure side, the budget totaled $193.2 million, and expenses came in about 97% of the budget. And then compared to last year, we saw higher property tax revenues, which we knew based on increased values. The larger sales tax collection this year continued, and then the interest on investments. And then on the expense side, they were about $15 million higher because of the purchase of professional services and increased personnel costs. So some general fund highlights. As noted, sales tax outperformed again this year, was over 18% above budget. The one thing on sales tax that I want to caution and caveat is the collections came in around $55 million, which is exactly where we've budgeted for fiscal year '24, which, given that, means there's very limited capacity and room in the sales tax that we've seen in the past. The current year '23, we budgeted $47 million, came in at 55, so there's an $8 million delta there. And so it's something we look at every week or every month as we get the reports from the controller. You receive those monthly reports, and we look at, you know, how it's trending compared to last year, prior years, and then what it's doing as it relates to inflation as well, and then the overall state of Texas where we're at. And so it's been a bumpy ride comparatively the last several months where we're exceeding inflation, not exceeding inflation, not performing as well as the rest of the state or performing better. And so we'll continue to monitor that really closely. License and permit was almost 20% above budget due to development and growth, and then, as highlighted, the interest on investments for the reasons stated previously. On the expense side, that was 96% of budget. Salary benefits came in below budget because of vacancies, but it was really close to budget. And this included a $3 million salary savings that we built into the overall. And this included a $3 million salary savings that we built into the overall budget. And so as we continue budgeting over the last several years, we've gotten tighter and tighter on the margin on salaries and benefits, which is typically that plus the sales tax delta is what we've used to, for our fund balance, to meet our policy requirements as well as to fund one-time capital expenditures. So just be aware that when we're getting this close on the budget, which on a budget perspective is really great and where you want to be, it does impact what we can do in the future. On the flip side, maintenance came in well below budget. So in this report, or the presentation, I cut down some of the slides that were in your packet to just highlight certain funds, of course, the general fund, which is our primary fund, and some other funds of note as part of this, so that you guys can focus on the more fun presentations that follow me. So the ones we want to talk about was the Cameron Park Zoo. So revenues were budgeted at $8.1 million for '23. They came in below budget at $7.8 million. And year-over-year revenues are up over $2 million, but that's primarily because of increased transfers from the general fund to cover the additional costs associated with the new meters that were installed at the zoo, which explains why the budget for the zoo this year came in at, was at $10 million. Came under budget because we didn't know exactly where we'd finish with the summer as far as water and sewer charges based on the new meters, since we only had a very limited subset of data as of the point we did the budget amendment. And so the increase is related to capital, but really it's those water and sewer charges. So a little bit more into the weeds. What we did see was we saw reduced revenue from merchandise sales at the zoo compared to previous year, as well as charges for services at about 93% of budget due to some declines in attendance that we saw during the summer. On the expense side, the zoo did try to manage their expenses and, you know, utilize water, wastewater flows as best they could in managing those. And at first was brought to my attention through conversations with Dwayne, so he was on top of it and monitoring that and making sure that we were aware and working with them on the solution there. Other purchase services came in above budget by about 34% related to the cost for the modular building that they're leasing out there. And so overall, for, and what you'll see for all the enterprise funds, in our reports, we put in the cost recovery. So the cost recovery for the zoo would be slightly under 50%. So we also wanted to highlight Cotton Wood Creek. So revenues were budgeted at $3 million, and revenues came in at $3.5 million, so 115% of budget. And from operations, they were $376,000 more than last year. So the golf course staff did a really good job this year and essentially almost didn't need the general fund transfer based on their performance. On the expense side, expenses were budgeted at $2.9 million and came in right online So just into the weeds a little bit more. So for rounds played, they were 18% above budget due to most rounds that they've seen played out there, and they did a really good job on merchandise sales as well. And so their overall cost recovery was about 102%. So what does that all mean? So this slide kind of shows what, based on the budget of data and the actuals, where fund balance, the changes in fund balance. So you'll see the general fund fund balance is projected to increase by five and a half million, and then the red lines show where we're tracking decline, so airport, zoo, and And then this slide shows, it's a little busy, but there's not a really good way to show it for this many funds. What are unaudited fund balances that we're projecting for each of the initial funds, which is in gray. The yellow, golden rod, whatever color, shows the minimum fund balance for '23. Our projected fund balance for '24, based on the adopted budget and the changes that are contained in that adopted budget. And then the red at the very end is the minimum fund balance for '24. So for the general fund, based on these numbers and the minimum fund balance that is in the budget, we are forecasting excess of about $11 million.
About what?
11 million. So it'd be the 68 above the 57. And then several of the enterprise funds don't have minimum fund balance policies, so that's why those items are blanked there. All right. And so on a quarterly basis, we're required per the Public Funds Investment Act to give you an update on our investment report. And the next slide is actually the slide I'm the most interested to discuss. But on our investment report side, at the end of the quarter, our investment portfolio totaled $788.3 million, a decrease of $24.5 million from the prior quarter as we continue to utilize our bond funds that we've used for capital projects and spend those down. Our unrealized loss as maturities, our investments matured, was able to decrease from $7.1 million previously to $5 million this quarter. And it'll continue to decline as we go through, and then depending on what the Fed does, it could further decline as well. So investment income totaled $8.3 million for the quarter and over almost $25 million for the entire fiscal year. Our days maturity decreased to 151 days from 157, so moving towards shorter-duration investments is something that we've continued to look at. And then our portfolio is yielding about 4.31%, which is compared to the tax pool yield of 5.32. And so as these older maturities come off, we're going to get closer and closer to tax pool because we're investing either in tax pool or at a higher yield for our combined funds going forward. So what I'm most proud of, what the team has been doing, and they've been doing a really good job on this, is throughout the year, we had, this calendar year, we had 59 total trades. So about in February of this year, we worked with our investment advisor to begin requiring them to, on all their trades, if available, include hub brokers as one of the three quotes that they receive. And so since that time, they've done 59, 49 trades, really. There were some before then. So of those trades, 49 included hub brokers. And so I'm really proud of the work that they've done, getting that communicated, making sure that they understood exactly what we're asking them to do, to just give these businesses the opportunity to bid, not necessarily awarding them the bid. We're still going with the lowest bidder. And so of those 49 trades, 13 were awarded to the hub businesses totaling over $86 million, which was 27% of the amount we traded.
It's an awesome opportunity to continue to normalize equity throughout all of our departments, so thank you.
All right. So in summary, the '23 budget was based on the activity that we were seeing in '22 as we were developing the budget and preparing it. The budget showed continued tightness between the general fund budget for salaries and wages and actual expenses. We continue to see strong sales, sales tax, sales and hotel motel tax revenues this year. And for both, the growth hasn't always aligned with inflation. Sometimes it's lower, sometimes it's higher, and it's just been topsy-turvy. Hotel motel's been more of a growth base than sales tax has been on an inflationary adjusted basis. But as mentioned earlier, sales tax, actual revenues for '23 came in right around where our '24 budget is. And at this point, given the way the year started, I wouldn't expect it to be unless something changes much more significantly than where we're at for the, have the budget. Solid waste in Cotton Wood Creek Golf Course, which I didn't highlight, solid waste here, outperformed expectations this year. As we mentioned, Cameron Park Zoo saw its revenue pull back a little bit compared to expectations due to lower admissions and merchandise sales. So looking forward, and I feel like I'm beating up here a little bit with the sales tax piece, but just want to make sure, fully aware of where we're at on the sales tax and the budget and kind of the smaller margin that we may have there. So for '24, what else does it include? '24 also includes a drawdown of fund balance of $7 million to fund one-time expenses as part of the budget. As mentioned, sales tax has been very sluggish to start the year, and we'll continue to monitor that as we get more data and see what's going on there. And we'll look into the background data of who's submitting sales tax, which will align with one of the future presentations that's coming up. And we continue to watch the economic backdrop and what consumers and how they're feeling, especially going into Christmas time, which I feel like the Black Friday numbers and Cyber Week were actually really good on a sales front. But we'll continue to monitor those and see how those are performing as we go through the '24 budget process, or through '24 and into the '25 budget process. Any questions?
Questions for staff?
Holmes here. I just wrote down a few notes here as you go, nothing in particular. I don't have any specific questions, but just some general comments on, on the financial investment reports. First of all, on the fund balance, fund balances, which are really reserve balances as we talk about them. When we first got, some of us here have been on council six, seven years now, and I think our goal back then was to beef these reserves up or make sure that we have proper reserves on the balance sheet. And I think we've done that 10 times. We've done it a lot better than I expected in finding funds and in keeping adequate liquidity on hand, because that's important not only for emergencies, but it keeps your balance sheet in great shape, and also lets you feel better about your debt service coverage ratios. And having that cash on hand is very important. It looks like we're in great shape. Year-over-year, it's a little flat, but I think we've got such reserves built up that we'll be in good shape, even with the targets. I think we were very intentional about setting those targets a couple of years ago on, in each of the funds, not just general, but the, some of the utility funds as well. So that looked great. The general fund, and Nick, you covered it on the sales tax, great trend there year-over-year, going from 53 to 56, and we've only budgeted 47. So that, that's, that was a strong year for sales tax. Some of it had to do with inflation, but I think our local economy is still pretty strong. So that is encouraging. $8 million delta, positive delta there in sales tax year-over-year. And then the other thing, I'm not sure you did mention, or maybe you did, the interest on investments was also up $7 million to year-over-year, $1 million to, to eight and a half million. So between those two, we got about $15 million of padding there that we kind of needed, actually. Costs are increasing, you know? They were up 9% year-over-year, but you're saying, we set up our budget to meet that, so we're actually within budget on the costs. So good job on, on giving us the heads-up and approving a budget that fit these, these costs. We didn't talk about it, you gave just a summary here, but if anybody wants to go back and look at the presentation, I like how you broke out the cost centers within the general fund, I think 20 different cost centers. A lot of good information year-over-year, year-to-date budget, just, I find it fascinating. It was great. The salaries and wages and benefits are right at budget, and I think that reflects our intent to go out and find the best people to fill these jobs that we have. And we're dealing somewhat with market, non-municipal-type jobs are competing with the private sector jobs. And, you know, for a while, we were losing people at a pretty alarming rate, and I think staff has done a good job at getting those back in. It's cost a little bit of money, but I think that's, that's the market right now. We're dealing with a tough job market, we're dealing with inflation. So the budget was set up pretty good, and I think our 2024 budget will reflect that also. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the utilities, basically water, wastewater, and solid waste. Revenue was off, actually, year-over-year in water, and expenses were up. Expenses up 30%. Again, kind of what we were talking about on the cost of doing business, supplies, maintenance, third-party contracting. It's up for everybody, not just the city of Waco. It's up for private sector, it's up for state, government. So we're dealing with that and trying to build our budgets around that. But even though revenue was off a little bit in water, and intuitively, it stands to reason, we were, we had a drought, and we were asking people to use less water, so our revenue was off. But again, we budgeted for that, and we were within our budget last year, and I assume that we'll, we'll be in budget next year as well. Again, all of this is in the headwinds of inflation and higher interest rates and rising costs. And I think we've done a good job, staff and ACMs across the back row there. I appreciate your input and letting us feel comfortable about the budget and getting us, being very transparent about how some of these costs are going up. Let me see if I had anything else. Again, I think I already mentioned that, about the, that on a, oh, one more comment I wanted to make. Now that we have the final numbers in on 2023, and maybe you've already done this, City Manager Ford, of looking at if we need to tweak, go back and look at 2020 or 2024 budget, and if there's any thing that was, wow, we didn't, we didn't really anticipate that when we set the budget, because the timing on this is sort of, we approved the budget several months ago for the next year. But if there's anything you see in here, another really jumped out at me. But, but you brought up a good point, Nick, on the, the holiday sales, the, if those are holding steady, that might be something to consider for next year. But anyway, if there's some way to tweak next, next year's budget, might be good to do. Anyway, great report. Appreciate the work, Nick and Bradley and all the city managers. That's all I had, Mayor.
That was all. Well said.
Well said. No, very, very, I, the only note I have is, you know, I think it's, we've really enjoyed great sales tax revenue in the last several years, but I really appreciate staff's conservative budgeting of that and, you know, utilizing the expertise that y'all have to say that that is a volatile revenue source and something that we've got to certainly watch. So I'm glad that we're prepared for what could be a change in the marketplace. So I'm really appreciative of everything that y'all have done, and this is an excellent report.
Thanks, Nick. All right. Our next work session is Work Session 974, and it's a discussion and update on the Lions Park redevelopment project. We got Jonathan Cook, our Director of Parks and Recreation, hopping up here. He'll kick us off, and he's joined by Andrew Albers, Principal of OJB, as well as Jerick Boss, a partner with OJB. OJB was our design firm on the project. Each, the three of them are going to provide an update on where we're at. We've been through several months worth of community input and actually, I think, close to 2,000 people engaged in that community input. This is probably one of the most significant efforts for community input, and it really produced, does some real deep and rich data for this project. So I'm excited for the council to see the renderings and hear about what Lions Park might look like in the future.
Thank you, Bradley and council and mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to sit here and talk about one of our more exciting projects that we've had here in our Parks and Recreation Department. And I remember one of the initial meetings and being with Assistant Manager Ryan Hold and City Manager Ford, and we were talking, trying to put into words what exactly we wanted to do with Lions Park, as we collaborated with the Lions Club. And, you know, we talked about a redevelopment or revitalize, but I think Bradley, one word he said was reimagine. And from there, we started just throwing out the word imagine. We wanted to imagine what Lions Park could be. We all know that for 70 years, it has really been ingrained in the fabric of our community and created so many memories and a special place for Wake Owens to come and enjoy that time outside and enjoying their attractions and the rides and the playgrounds. So we knew we'd just get to come with it at, you know, by ourselves. This is a true community park and knew, as we imagined, we wanted the community to imagine what this park could become. And so we did work with colleagues, not only from the Lions Club, but from the county, Extracole Event Center, the Cooper Foundation, Waco Foundation, to start to lay out the process on dreaming what this park could be and realistically how we could bring it to life so that we ensure it's creating memories for 50 to 70 more years. to life so that we ensure it's creating memories for 50 to 70 more years for families to come together with kids. And so it's very important as we're moving forward and laid out that process to develop a team, and that's what we brought OJB in, just, you know, a highly recognized firm throughout the nation. You look at major cities such as Dallas and Clyde Warren Park, Houston Parks, Omaha, North Carolina, they've created really the ability with their skillset to create parks that are dynamic public spaces. It's one thing to build the park, but how do you activate it? How do you make sure that people are coming all the time and enjoying it? And that's what really a key component. And finally, what we're going to get into the conversation today is first and foremost, we wanted to know what the community saw in this park, what it meant to them and what it's going to mean to them. And so they brought in Lori Wilson, who's here with us today from Case Strategies with a great track record of getting a lot of data from the community. So I'm going to turn it over. We have Jerick Boss and Andrew Albers here to talk about the community engagement process, how we developed some schemes, and really how we created a vision of what we imagined Lyons Park can be.
Thanks, Jonathan. Just to give you a quick overview, during the past several months, we've gone through a public process for concept design. We kicked it off with a first public meeting where we talked about the site, we talked about park trends, kind of what's going on in the world of parks these days, and presented some case studies and benchmarks. We also hosted that as an online event as well, so having public meeting one twice, once in person and once online. We followed up after an initial survey that coupled the public meeting one with survey results and a public meeting two. So we recapped public meeting one, talked about survey results, and talked about kind of big picture park adjacencies and diagrams of the park. Our public meeting three, we went through kind of taking the diagrams that we had looked at, distilling them into two diagrammatic plans, initial concept plans, looking at visualizations and video vignettes of the concepts. And then our public meeting four, which we just had in November, we looked at a concept design plan and had more of a town hall kind of format, where we were able to talk to the community and really present the, a video of the, of the park and go through what the design would be. And just a note, the goals of the concept of design were to identify and prioritize the key program elements, to develop a formal framework that the park could be designed around, and to understand and establish the budget for the future phases. Just one of the things that we did was look at the site itself, analyze it. A couple of key things that we wanted to point out in that analysis were the fact that the park is bounded by New Road and Boski Boulevard, where we have fast traffic and heavy traffic on two sides of the park. We looked at the infrastructure that the Lyons had planted over the years, I mean, the tree infrastructure, so valuing those existing trees, looking at how we can work the design around those existing trees, looking at how we could possibly connect to the neighborhood and make better connections to the neighborhood that's adjacent, and also looking at opportunities to consider a connection to the base and the Extracole Event Center and what sort of synergies might be found there. And then one thing that was, that we found on site that was an amazing opportunity is to keep the old existing Lyons Park wall honoring the, the past of the park. In those initial meetings, we talked about park trends and considerations. So some of the items that we presented to the community to consider, including performance pavilions, how do you activate it year-round, iconic structures, community space, ideas of flexible activity lawns, food and beverage kiosks. And then one of the things that we presented and talked about a lot with the community was inclusive play or the idea of play for all. How can this playground be a place for children of all abilities? These are just some of the photos of a public process, so from, images from our public meetings. A couple of the things that we did that were outside of the sort of normal public meeting process included visiting with all of the summer camps over the summer. We, in kind of the third row down, you can see some images on the right. Parks Department helped us organize trips to all the summer camps, and we put up, presented boards to, you know, what would be our constituency for the park, the children, and let them kind of go through a dot exercise of indicating park programs and images that really resonated with them. We met with the Lyons Club. Parks Department went out during summer events and helped give people access to the survey through QR codes, gave them access to presentations, and then our final public meeting. In addition, Parks also took the youth council to Dallas on a field trip to visit some of the parks. And the input that we received from both the children and the youth council trip were then folded into the other public responses that we received. There were, the big initial piece of input was our initial survey. We had 1,918 survey respondents and an 80% completion rate. And as we looked at the survey responses, this is the, the bar graph of preferred program elements. And what we saw was that playground and play for all, the idea of inclusive play was definitely number one. So honoring the, the notion that Lyons Park was for kids, that this is a place for, for children was the number one item on the list. But then following that were natural elements, walking paths, picnic shelters, and then fifth down the line were traditional Lyons Park attractions. Flexible open space followed that, and then water amenities followed, followed that. So one of the things we heard a lot of was community, family, and places for children to play.
You know, once we start that community process, one of the things that's very exciting and, and things that we heard was memories. When people think of Lyons Park, there are often many fond memories in, in the imagery and in the discussions that we had with people. They were talking about the Lyons Park of the past. What are some of those elements that we'd like to bring forward? And then what are some of the elements, what are some of the new traditions as we move forward as a community that we would like to include in the park? So all of that great feedback that we heard, it brings us to a point where we start to look at, we call them some of the programming chips. So that could be that open flexible space, it could be children's play, it could be a water activity. So we begin to understand what some of these pieces are and how they start to form and what they start to look like as we begin to develop initial plans. So with that, we looked at a number of initial diagrams. The, the larger diagram on the screen, screen starts to show some of those key elements that became very important and key factors that we wanted to develop. For instance, would there be a flexible pavilion, an event lawn? Would we have an activity lawn? How would play in the park be incorporated? And then how do we support some of the existing programs that are happening with the adjacent neighborhood, the schools, and then just the greater open and green spaces and parks within the city of Waco? So all of these things began to generate with some basic ideas that we could talk about.
And just one, one point, one thing to point out on, on the diagrams is you look at the, the four plans, the children's play area, the playground itself, kind of centerpiece of the, of the park moves around in different places, and we consider it in a lot of different places. The scheme that the, the community preferred has pushed that towards New Road, which we understand, and we talked about that being a busy street. The reason for doing that was to open up the park more towards North 42nd. And the idea was that along that side of New Road, the playground would be enclosed with fence and then other landscape buffers so that the playground really opens to the 42nd Street, and then we'd be buffered and separated from New Road. One thing that you noticed in the bubble diagram perhaps was the Lyons Park train, which has been a big conversation piece through the public process. Out of the 1,900 respondents to the survey, the train was mentioned 1,400 times. So it is, it is one of the, one of the things that was key to the conversation about Lyons Park was the train and the, the preserved train. The Lyons Club has preserved the train. They have several trains, but the one that seemed most likely to be able to work in the future was the existing diesel train. That train would need to be assessed and probably some maintenance if it was to be moved forward. However, the train is an 18-gauge train, so the wheels are 18 inches apart. The reason that that's important is because the train is, it's a narrow train. It does not allow for wheelchair access. The cars are too narrow because of just the, the gauge of the train. The way that it handles handicap accessibility now is through a transfer sort of arrangement. And so our recommendation is if the train is to be considered to come back, that we would get a new wider gauge train that would allow for fully accessible wheelchair cars. And then looking at train options, electric train would be our recommendation because it eliminates fuel storage, which was something that had to be remediated with the existing Lyons Park train. It also eliminates fumes for the drivers and the riders and is comparable in cost. And we have the, the cost on the later slide shown as a, as an alternate.
So as we work through that diagram and talk through a lot of these puzzles that we worked through together as a team and as a community in that discussion, what you see here on the screen now is the conceptual master plan. So this shows the, the realization of all of those ideas. If you look kind of where the dashed red line is, that might be the alignment of where the train could go. In the upper right corner, we see potentially a train station there. We have a Lyons Court that could honor some of that history that we saw in the park. There may be a water feature in kind of a central gathering plaza, a pavilion, a flexible lawn. And then along 42nd Street, there are opportunities where we could have food trucks, you could have a marketplace, kind of moving to plan left. You see a lot of large circles on the plans. Those represent the existing trees. So keeping as many of the heritage trees, we think is really important in that plan. So that could be a great spot where we could have a plaza, where we could have gathering, shade structure. You'll see the playground, as Andrew described, kind of along New Road. It kind of turns us back a little bit. It's screened and protected. Safety is obviously at, at the forefront of everything that we're considering. The playground would be a great space. There's a restroom building and then a flexible lawn that could be programmed in a number of different ways. This looks at a phase one. We think one of the key elements, most successful element in the park that we see right now is the children's play areas. They are always packed. They are always exciting. And in a lot of the things, as we talked about, the memories of Lyons Park was, what are these moments of wow? What are these moments of excitement and tradition? So we think this is a really great beginning point. We think in a first phase, we would want to make sure that we got all of the bones right. So getting great streets, a great perimeter sidewalk, great street trees around the perimeter, protecting all of the trees inside the park, and then getting the pathways in each of kind of the key spaces laid out. Then we really focus in on a great playground experience, restroom buildings, as well as the existing police station that would be in there. And then we can kind of move forward from that. The next image starts to show some of the things that we talked about. The train was a really important thing. There was, again, discussions of a community pool. We know that this is an element that would require further study. This looks at an overlay if we were to consider something like this. It might change that master plan, so that children's play area might shift towards Boski Street a little bit. This looks at something that would be in similarity in size to a typical Texas high school pool and a diving pool as well, with some surface parking, could have a great connection to the park. To be further studied, to be understood, I think.
And I think the next slide is the video.
Next slide is the video. So this gives a little bit of a representation. I think people are always interested. What's the feel? What's the character? What's this sense of wonder and excitement? So kind of the, the Lyons Court along Boski, you can start to see in the upper right corner, maybe that area where the train station could be, a shade pavilion, a great lawn that could host a number of events from throwing the frisbee, throwing the baseball, families gathering. There could be a look back to an interesting lighting feature that might reference the old Lyons Park, areas to picnic, great signage. When we, when we asked the questions, what's authentically Waco? We looked at some of the signage in the historic downtown areas and how we may bring some of those elements into the park. And you can see how that, that train plaza may be an exciting moment for people. Different courts and groves where you could picnic, where you could maybe have food trucks, you could envision a farmer's market. And that path may meander so that we could protect some of the existing heritage trees. It's softer surfaces, hard surfaces, elements of play for all. So while we would have an amazing playground, we're also interested in what do teenagers like to do? What do young adults like to do? Parks for all ages and all users. This shows, you know, would there be maybe a multipurpose activity lawn on the end? Could we have something like a little hammock court on one of these areas? Would we have a gaming cart? How would programming work into this? And then would we have maybe some iconic features that start to find their way back into this children's play area? Would we have a lion play structure potentially? Would we have areas for storytelling? And how do we have amenities for families that are coming to the park? So a key central entry that contains that children's play area for safety and as one grandmother said, if I could watch one entrance, then I know I can keep everybody in the, in the park. And then how could we incorporate some of the, the larger slides? Would there be a carousel moment? Would we have maybe a climbing net that could be bouncy? Would we add some elevation in the park areas for the children? Would there be a small splash pad that could be in this space? And, and how would we leverage other city relationships? Would we have a library cart or storytelling that could happen in the children's play area? Would we have learning moments? So kind of a great overview of all of the possibilities. And then obviously, great shade building upon that existing canopy right now will be really important. And then kind of this destination for the neighborhood as well as the, the greater Waco community and family. And then this next image just shows kind of that bird's eye perspective of the park and what that space might be. That plaza. So each of these images and even in the video kind of shows what that phase one might be. Some of the lighting elements that could take place, these flexible plazas, the children's play area with the slides, and then these bouncy climbing nets and a variety of different activities and opportunities for all.
And so with, with the, at the end of concept design, as we generated the master plan and then looked at a phase one plan, we worked with a construction estimator to put together some rough order of magnitude concept budgets. The total master plan budget that we had estimated came at 42, 42 and a half million dollars. The phase one concept budget that we had developed came in at $25 million. And you can see some of the alternates listed below, the electric train, our new train priced out as an electric 24-gauge train came in at $1.24 million. We had talked about one of the items that was a, a key thing for the public was the notion of preserving the carousel. The carousel is something that has been preserved. Building a small building to house that, that priced out at $800,000, and then the water features, some of the grander water features priced out at $800. So there were 2.8, a little over 2.8 million dollars in alternates. Next steps, so we are at the end of concept design. Next steps include design development, which would go through traditional phases of, our typical phases of design development, so schematic design, design development, contract documents, and then permitting, bidding contract, and then construction. So next steps include council input, direction, establishing a funding schedule and developing a fundraising campaign, and then direction to proceed with design documentation through construction based on budget direction. That's it.
Good deal. Thank you. And as you can see, it was a lot of input coming, and this part means a lot, in a lot of different ways to people. So trying to take all of those elements, and I go back to the So trying to take all of those elements, and I go back to the word, trying to imagine what this could be and getting to this point. And we appreciate y'all leading us through, but definitely want to hear back, any feedback from y'all as we continue to look at creating just a dynamic public space that will just be a great asset not only for the neighborhood and the area around here, but for our entire city.
Questions or comments?
I'll start here. This is great work. Man, it's beautiful. Pretty pictures and looks fantastic. And I think, I say this every time we talk about the Lions Park. The Lions Club, seventy years ago, had some great vision and financial commitment to making it a really cool place to take kids and to celebrate Waco for, like I say, seventy years. So kind of reimagining what that might look like. And that was a challenge. And this is great work. I like the public process that you went through, and these are great initial schematics and concepts. I love it. I like how you preserved the classic bits, the train and the kiddie land is in there, the possibility of a pool, and how you've incorporated all of the feedback into some nice schematics here. I like the open park space that we, prior, the Lions Park vision wasn't quite like that. It had more stuff in there, but I like the open area, I think, the way it is right now even. With kind of cleaned up where you can kind of see across there is visually kind of attractive as you drive by there. I know, and one thing that you talked about was the fast traffic around there that probably didn't exist when we first had the Lions Park. I know that Boski is probably a little more busy now than it was in the fifties, as is New Road that goes by there. So recognizing that into your, into the plan is integral. I know the part comes to me then how to, next steps, and you have it right here on this slide. You know, you've got to start thinking of budget and how you pay for all this. I know we're currently working on other parks in their embryonic stages similar to this. The Floyd Casey one and the China Spring one, we just kind of launched both of those as well. And we've got a lot of capital improvements and maintenance in our existing park system too. Jonathan, as you know. And we're doing a lot of work on the riverfront and the River Walk there. All I'm saying is we've got a lot of projects going on. This one I love. I would love to get it right at the top. But we've got to be, we've got to figure out some of the phasing, the funding, and maybe the sequencing. And it's not easy. I'd love to spend forty-two and a half million on this thing if we had it. I don't want to put our, we do have that much in the reserve though, don't we? We can't, but we don't want to spend it all on one park. Anyway, great work. But you've given us a lot of food for thought on how we proceed conceptually. Because I think a big part of it was, do we make it just like it was with the Putt Putt Park there and the carousel and some rides and stuff? I think this is a really great reimagining of what this could look like. And I hope we can get to fruition on something here. And maybe we figure out how to phase this in with some capital partners also. Great work. That's all I had, Mayor.
I'm gonna just echo the part, especially dealing in capital partners. I think that the, we as Wacoans are incredibly passionate about this park. You know, whether you're born and raised here, whether you got it as quick as you can, if it was open and you had an experience, you remember it and it is legacy building. It is generational, right? I think that, I mean, clearly, we dream big and in color. This is huge. Good, but huge. And I think that the only way that we can really approach this is much like we're doing with the Performing Arts Center and the community who clearly spoke and made their voices heard about their desires of what this park will look like are gonna have to step up and help us figure out how to pay for this. Because, yes, we've got a lot of generational projects in queue right now. This is our season for that. But I think that, you know, what we, the phasing will work, I think, to a perspective. I mean, like Councilmember Holmes, my apologies, Mayor Protem Holmes, said, as it being cleared out right now, it's changed the face of what's available for park space in the core of the city. And, you know, in, right in that area, there's a space for me to go and run and frolic and goat yoga or whatever. You know, in that space, right now as it is. And so if we do this thoughtfully, then we can make it the Lions Park of, you know, that the community is imagining. I need everybody to understand that this is gonna take time. This is not something that we will actualize tomorrow. Again, like the, it's gonna take, but I know those partnerships are here. I have no doubt, because this is something, this is one of those things that people feel personally passionate about. And so I have no doubt that, you know, whether it's the, from how Doris Miller, the memorial got built with the coin boxes. You know, I mean, that's one of those things. That's one of those things where, you know, the kids are collecting their pennies and allowances and put it to the side. And you've got legacy gifts that are left in trusts and things that will be dedicated to this. I think that that's the way we have to start thinking about that pacing and understand that this is gonna, this will happen faster when more people are involved. So I look forward to bite-sized pieces of this because I think that's the smartest way to approach it. But, you know, just as, and I hope, I know that as brilliant as you all are, you got all of these people's contact information. You know, I mean, so what it means is, okay, so this is, and keep them informed. This is, and with a clear message, if you want to see this, you know, you came out, you told us what we wanted, what you wanted, what you wanted to see, how we wanted to see it. Very good on the electric train, by the way. Then it's going to take us and twenty thousand more, y'all. So let us work this in a way that makes sense for us as a city, but more so for us as a community and with realistic goals and measurable points. But great job.
It is a great job. Right now, though, I'm focused on two other parks. That's my inclusion park that we need here in the city of Waco. We have no inclusion park for our disabled children and adults. So my focus is the inclusion park and the park that's going to be next to it for the Floyd Casey Stadium. I think anytime we put something out there for our constituents to come and have a good time to play with the family and have a place to come and just enjoy the area, whether it be Lions Park or Floyd Casey Stadium or Bells Hill Park or Cotton Palace Park, wherever. I think anytime we spend money on that sort of thing, it's good investment for the city and for our constituents to be proud of, to say, hey, this is in my neighborhood and I'm gonna go to it. I think the train, I love that. We lost the one by Cameron Park that we used to have a train there and a Putt Putt there. I know you guys are too young, but I remember going to that train and to the Putt Putt before they tore it down for the zoo. But anytime we make an area for families to enjoy, I think it's a great investment.
Yeah, and I'll just chime in and say, when I was on council in 2020, this was District Five, and it was really cool to get back onto council this year. And by the graciousness of Mayor Protem Holmes giving and gifting Lions Park over to District Four. It was really great to inherit that into District Four at such a cool and pivotal time. When I came to Waco about twelve years ago, the park was definitely no longer in its heyday. But it is tough. I live about a mile from the park now, and it's really tough, even just in my neighborhood, to throw a stone and not run into somebody that does have a really fond memory of the park at its peak. I was on a walk recently, ran into the gentleman who laid the original train track for the park, him and his father. And so there's a lot of history and a lot of legacy, all things that have been said about Lions Park. And I think it's really crucial to honor that. And I think you guys have done a great job in listening to the community to make sure that shows through. But I also agree with Councilwoman Bearfield that with that comes a commitment and an attachment to making it something that is honoring of that legacy going forward for the community. And I think that there's a lot of opportunity there for partnerships to get that forty-two million dollar price tag covered. But yes, it will take time. And I want to reiterate that and say that loud and clear. While right now it is beautiful, and I'm glad that we were able to clean it up, and I saw someone having a picnic there a couple of days ago, and the weather was nice out. So I'm glad it's still in use right now. One thing that is separate from the work that you guys are doing with this beautiful design here that I do want to reiterate is that, as I mentioned, I live about a mile from the park, and there's sort of three adjacent neighborhoods, neighborhood associations there. And through talking with them, this is such a wonderful asset, but there is not a ton of infrastructure to provide safe pathway to the park, not by car from the adjoining neighborhoods to the park. And so, again, you guys are doing a stellar job designing the park itself. I'm just saying this sort of at large to staff and to our commitment as a city that if, you know, I think if we're gonna sink a lot of time and money into this really great investment, we want to make sure that it's usable and accessible for the community immediately around it. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Great work. I think our council has really covered it. I really appreciate our community for coming out. If the train works, I think that'd be really cool. I think another, I've heard other people even say, you know, trains are cool, whether it's in, you know, around Cameron Park Zoo or around here. I think that there definitely is a desire for the community to enjoy those if they're available. I really appreciate the future phase of a potential pool. And having that just being tucked away is something that as our community grows, the possibility for that, I think is worthwhile to explore and love that that was contemplated in this and something that the city can continue to evaluate the desire and the cost benefit of that based on what the community wants. A couple of like really small things that I was thinking about the old Lions Park or kind of the memory of that. And, you know, one little idea I had is, I don't know if in the children's area, there's like one putting green, like just to kind of be homage to Putt Putt. I don't know if that's a headache to have to keep up with, you know, a couple of putters or something like that. But another thought I had was on, you know, the food truck area. If you kind of try to thematically make that feel more like an amusement park, if you had private food trucks there, but maybe they had games out or something like that to kind of be a head nod to the amusement park days of old. But, you know, it removes the obligation for the city to have to run an amusement park. But if you had a private food truck, little park going on there or the ability for that, there were some sort of head nod to the amusement days of past. And when you're walking through those food trucks, it kind of feels like you're in that amusement park setting. That might be some ways to kind of reduce the burden of having to administrate a full-fledged amusement park, but at the same time, honor the legacy of the park. Really appreciate the work for this and appreciate those community members who came out and look forward to a capital campaign in the public-private partnership that will ensue from the philanthropic hearts of our community. Thanks for this presentation.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
All right, our next discussion is Work Session 975. Jonathan Cook's gonna stay down at the table for a few moments and give a briefing on Eclipse Over Texas Live from Waco. And I forgot my eclipse glasses. I was actually gonna wear them during the intro.
Do you have any?
No, not yet. They haven't come in yet. The five thousand that I ordered to sell for the eclipse weekend have not made it in.
Thousand pairs floating around the community, and I didn't bring one. So Jonathan's gonna walk you through some specifics around what's happening over the weekend and what the city team's planning to put on from event perspective and what visitors will have to look forward to that weekend. Jonathan?
There we go. Once again, thank you for the opportunity, for allowing me to speak. For a couple moments about one of the more exciting events that in my career here in the city and doing events for a couple decades now, that we've never seen something like this. With the momentum that came to us and built up, and now as we're sitting just a couple months away, just the excitement around our community and really around the world as we talk about the eclipse over Texas and how it's going to be live from Waco. It is a golden opportunity, an opportunity that does not come along every year, every couple of years. In fact, another thirty years until we see something like this in the United States. So why Waco? We're gonna look at, why is Waco such a popular destination and opportunity? We're gonna look at our planning efforts, an overview of the events that we do currently have planned, how to capitalize on the impact, but at the same time, how to realize that it's not just the impact of events into our economy, but making sure we're working with the proper authorities and local officials to have preparations in place to accommodate the crowds. I'll start with why Waco and a graphic that we've used for a little bit now to show that path of the 2024 total solar eclipse. You see Waco, the star right in the middle. And what that means is we're one of the best places that will have the longest stretch of totality to where you'll have a total eclipse for more than four minutes and thirteen seconds. And what that means is, one, Texas is a great spot because obviously, first of April, we got good weather typically. You usually average about temperatures in the seventies and eighties, and there's about a seventy percent chance of a sunny afternoon in springtime. So people who follow these eclipse and natural phenomenons around the world, very in tune with that. And so I mentioned that four minutes of complete darkness. If you recall back in October, we did have a solar eclipse called a Ring of Fire, you know, but there was still some light coming in, but still really cool in the middle of the day to take place. This will be having at the same time. But this is what you're going to get, a complete blackout to where you'll be able to see the stars in the sky. You'll be able to pick up where we'll be having the event along the River Walk. You'll start hearing the cricket, crickets chirp. And so things will change and will, that sense of really amazement as we watch our world at work. Now, one of the things, when we found out this was coming and we start talking about what this could mean, any great event or any great campaign that we have in the city is going to be a team effort. And a great opportunity here from City of Waco and working with our convention of visitors bureau staff, city manager's office, but we reached out and working with Baylor University on this project. And really, a cornerstone of this project is the Lowell Observatory, a famous observatory based out of Flagstaff, Arizona, known for discovering Pluto. And then also, an amazing partner that we have in this is the Discovery Network. And that takes it from not only a localized event to where people are coming into Waco, but now we're broadcasting this event out to the world thanks to the efforts of Discovery Network. So about two years ago is when this process started. And one of the first things that the committee saw, we came together with our partners, and you have to think of obviously that logo and that timeline, that tagline. And Eclipse Over Texas Live from Waco, we wanted to have that broadcast feel and really say that this is the place to be as one of the forerunners of a great event to put on to celebrate the eclipse. And our convention of visitor bureau under the leadership of Lisa and Dan just done a great job making sure that we're starting to get this information out about the event. So our countdown is on. And I mentioned, one of the first things Bradley threw out, we have secured over a hundred thousand solar glasses for this event to be divided among around the partners for schools, for the event. Just think about it, you know, it's last minute preparations. It's like the fireworks stand before New Year's Eve. What's everyone gonna want before the solar eclipse? You do have to view this with solar glasses, and so we knocked that off. We had a kickoff event, went out and hosted a big press conference out at McLean Stadium in April of '22 to really announce that we were launching this effort. And then we followed up this past spring with a press conference and town hall meeting. Have continued with community meetings and committee meetings. And really in a phase right now of building awareness. And we get a lot of interest and phone calls from people all over the world and all over the nation coming in. But I think one of the biggest focuses we have right now is educating our local community that this is gonna be taking place at the start of April.
It's amazing how much I've aged since that kickoff.
So y'all hear me say, there's a presentation doesn't go by much. It's about the experience. It's about the experience. And so we wanted that full weekend of Waco experience, and what we found with people traveling here, extended nights, multiple nights staying here. And so the eclipse does fall on Monday, April 8th. So what do you do all weekend? Well, we're gonna have a grand time in downtown Waco. Friday night, we'll be coming in with the Music Over Waco Concert, followed up by Saturday night, an eclipse working with partners at a Region 12 to create a themed eclipse event at the convention center. And then that night, working with the Greater Waco Sports Commission to provide a glow run to where essentially it'll be themed out with neon, with people running in the evening going towards Cameron Park. We'll come back on that Sunday in the Indian Springs Park area to create a Light Over Waco event to where we capitalize with a lantern parade and different light spectacles that we're gonna be creating in the park. And as I mentioned, we will follow up on Monday, April 8th with the big event, Eclipse Over Texas Live from Waco. Now, the main event will be taking place at Touchdown Alley next to McLean Stadium. We're very familiar with this area as it's where we host our annual Fourth on the Brazos event. The festival will be taking place from 10 to 4:00 p.m. And working Lowell Observatory has done similar events in other areas, most recently in 2017 in Oregon. People line up for this event, and, and so they're ready to go. The eclipse will actually, you'll start seeing the effects at 12:20 and totality begins at 1:38. And then the event will be wrapping up in the afternoon. This is an event, the event at McLean Stadium, a ticketed event that will feature access to telescopes, educational activities, programmatic activities. Also, we'll have food trucks and family fun throughout. So as I mentioned, it's very similar to a July 4th layout that we have in this area. Astronomers will be on site courtesy of Lowell Observatory and Baylor University. And one of the aspects, we expect a very large crowd. We'll be providing shuttles from downtown as well. And as I mentioned, part of the neat thing in the collaboration that we have with Discovery Network is they will be hosting a live stream from the event, obviously with B-roll along the river, downtown in the background that'll showcase the event. So just imagine, most people can't see this, but what do you do? You want to get on your computer, or you want to check one of your news stations. Those feeds will be coming live from Waco. So just a great opportunity for us that people are gonna be seeing Waco from around the world. I mentioned the work of our Convention and Visitors Bureau and team. This is an ad they've been throwing around, really having fun with this, and throw some shade with us this April. And so they've been working and advertising this on, on the big screens at the Baylor Football Stadium, and Carla and her team, they're gonna continue with an advertising campaign leading up to the event. Now, the impact. Mitch, and you hear a lot, and a lot of people coming to town and done a lot of research on other cities that have been in a similar situation. And what we've seen so far is a good response to the event, the hosting at McLean Stadium. We've sold nearly 4,000 tickets to date, and we've got 15,000 allotted. One of the things we immediately sold out was, were 1,000 VIP tickets. Those went very quickly as we'll have a full VIP area. And now we're hearing a lot from school groups, looking, how do we accommodate schedules and buses? And then working to make sure, and we have plans in place to make sure that, you know, tickets are available throughout our community. One of the other big impacts are these hotel stays and local businesses seeing thousands of people coming in from all over. We have seen hotels are currently reaching capacity with hotel sellouts already, and those three to four day minimum stays are prevalent in most properties. And I mentioned just the spillover from restaurant shops and vendors, much like when we host a, a large event, like an Ironman, people come in from out of town and they want to experience Waco, and it just so happens that the main event falls on a Monday. So once again, a golden opportunity for weekend activities. Dan in Convention and Visitors Bureau did run the Economic Impact Calculator. Those estimates are quite high, and looking at approximately 15.7 millions in direct business sales, 13 million in lodging sales, and 1 million in our hot tax. And so those are numbers, it's just not a regular event. It is an opportunity event, once in a lifetime event here in Waco. We know with the attention and people wanting to come, I-35 is expected to be, you know, a corridor of people wanting to see this, even working with Hoel at the airport, lots of reservations coming in, people flying in to see this. We know we need to be prepared. And being prepared is something that we've been having monthly meetings now, not only with our partners, but bringing in coordination on that local, regional, and state levels. Ryan Durker from our Waco McLennan County Emergency Management Team has been leading that and really handling from that Emergency Operations Center how that's going to look and operate. Obviously, any event that we do, there's that coordination with Waco Fire and Waco PD, not only for the events that we will be hosting, but from a citywide perspective and making sure that we have resources in place. I mentioned I-35, obviously, tech's not a big partner as well. But this experience and previous events, we just talked about Waco Wonderland where initial projections are looking back over 20,000 to 25,000 people throughout the weekend. I mentioned Ironman, July 4th, national championship parades, political events. So we're taking that experience as a city team and collaborating to make sure that all the necessary measures are in place that we can host not only events throughout the weekend, the event on Monday, or if people are just traveling through and stopping in Waco, they're gonna experience a great bit of hospitality from us and a lot of different offerings for the Eclipse Over Texas Live from Waco. So any questions about the eclipse, definitely happy to answer.
Any questions?
I'll just chime in right quick on, I like the idea of having that weekend stuff. I mean, the, the Friday, Saturday, Sunday before the Monday, that makes a lot of sense. I, I was able to see the total eclipse up in Alliance, Nebraska, four or five years ago, I guess. It's cool. I mean, and there was a lot of people from all over the, you know, for 15 minutes or hour, 20 minutes, they were there and then they left. But, so this idea of creating a weekend experience that we're kind of planning on, I think is great, Jonathan. One thing I started thinking about is you, you mentioned the hotels, and I have no doubt they're all gonna be booked that weekend. But is there any way, just to drive it home, that we can get reports from the hotels on what that weekend is looking like, or are they 100%? Or, you know, maybe every month we just get that visibility so we can, because it's one thing to talk about it.
Yeah.
It's another thing to tell local merchants in the chamber and, hey, this is sold out, guys, I mean, be ready. I think it's gonna happen, but it's just so weird to think we're gonna have the giant weekend of, of commerce in our city. Anyway, great job.
Yeah, well, that'll get some reports too, as we're starting to really see those numbers on the ticketing side and the hotel side and what we're seeing. So that's part of the preparations, and we'll share that with y'all.
Super. Thanks, John.
Got a question. Do you, do we know like the, I just thought about this as we had a picture of the suspension bridge. Do we know like the weight capacity for that? I can imagine that just being lined with people on, you know, looking out on either side, checking out the, at least for that four and a half minutes, checking out the eclipse. I, I just feel like we're gonna have a ton of people over there.
Well, and to answer your question, yes, we do have capacity. I'm not gonna quote the number, that was, we did a study. And some of us, remember, we used to do July 4ths down at Indian Springs Park, and you could visibly see that bridge sway. That's how it's designed, suspension bridge, but with the renovations of the bridge, we did do a weight capacity study, and, and so we had that. And we are looking at not only the event, but the impact on our park system and public areas. And so those are all in consideration publicly, and we know people are gonna want to get outside for that hour, hour or two, even though it's on a Monday, everyone's gonna be outdoors looking at what nature has to offer.
Yeah. And then just some quick math, the estimated economic impact nets out just under $30 million, which is just under 70% of the Lyons Park Fund. So just putting that out there.
I will not be open for the eclipse, but it might be.
It'll be five years to get my park.
And then last thing, there was a slide earlier about the kickoff press conference, and I just, your professional opinion, would you advise using a telescope to look directly at the sun at any point?
I did that. There was like, someone with a camera was like, we need you to come here and take this picture. And I naively said, yes, it's a lesson in how like obedience and compliance I am.
It appears that Mayor Pro Tim Holmes behind you was in on the gag, because he is laughing pretty hard.
I could not believe he was doing that.
Just saying.
What's gonna do with that?
That's all I had.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Jonathan, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Good job. Our, we've got two more council presentations, and I think we can get through them. I've asked the teams to shave off about five minutes apiece, and it, it should work. Next Work Session's 976, a discussion of CBB Fall Update and Activities and Bookings, as well as performance at the airport. I'm gonna invite Lisa Blackman and Hoel Martinez to give these briefings, and they've got some exciting updates. Lisa?
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to present to you today. I will be presenting on convention center and tourism updates, and Hoel will provide an update on the, on the airport. This is not the right PowerPoint.
Is there a problem?
I think so.
Yep.
Or maybe, I can flow with it.
Is it the wrong version?
It is.
How different is it?
I don't know which version this one is.
Tell you what, why don't we bring the GPI team up?
Okay.
And we'll call the next.
Yes.
We'll just bring, Nate, Charles, and Chris are both here.
Thank you.
And we'll just make sure we have the right version.
Yep.
All right. Work Session 977, Discussion of the Graphic Packaging International Project. Excited for Chris Collins from the Greater Waco Chamber, Senior Vice President of Economic Development, and Charles Leest, our Deputy Director of Utilities here at the city, to provide an update on what is the largest economic development project we've seen in our city's history. Chris is gonna share some numbers to that effect, and you're gonna see some updated, updated aerials. And then Charles is gonna talk about, man, quite an effort to get utilities upstream of the plant and downstream of the plant in place to serve this great company. So, Chris, I think you're kicking us off here.
Yes, sir.
Hopefully you've got the right slides.
Hopefully I do. Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here today. We appreciate it, the, the chance to give you an update on what's happening. As City Manager Ford mentioned, this is the largest economic development project that we've announced in our, in our community's history. So as we roll forward, there we go. We're gonna give you a quick overview of the project itself and its economic impact. Charles is gonna talk about the offsite infrastructure improvements. I'll hit the onsite infrastructure improvements, and then just to give you a visual and into what Graphic Packaging is currently doing and, and the milestones that are ahead of So as, as we've mentioned, this is a billion-dollar capital investment, and that is billion with a B. $500 million in real property investment and $535 million, $53500 million in, in taxable personal property. As with a lot of manufacturing projects, we've seen automation come more and more into the process. And so as a result, this very large project will have 190 direct employees that will operate a 24-hour facility. So that's, that, if you think historically about where we've been with manufacturing operations, this would have been hundreds and hundreds of people to do this, but with technology advancements, you see that those numbers have come down. But that also means that it's a much higher skilled individual that's needed to operate those facilities. And correspondingly, the average annual wage for a worker there will be $65,000 a year plus benefits. And then the real estate perspective of this is that they were occupied, they will occupy 125 acre site, and through their multiple buildings, construct 640,000 square feet of new, new operations. But with every project, there are economic impacts of it, and this is a project that is generational in investment. GPI as a company is making a billion-dollar investment. This investment is the largest in their company's history, and so as they think about how they're making investments, they're not thinking about it from a 10 or a 20-year perspective. They're thinking about it from a generational and century perspective. So when we look at the economic impact of, of this project, we, we look at it at a longer timeframe than we would normally in, in our normal analysis, which is typically a 10-year impact. So looking at it from a 20-year perspective, we're looking and anticipate over 400 direct and indirect jobs will be created as a result of this project, over $460 million worth of new direct and indirect payroll that will be generated and circulating through the economy, and then $470 million worth of new taxes generated across McLennan County and $287 million in new taxable sales in Waco itself. So certainly a lot of, of new value that this company is bringing with it. But these types of projects take infrastructure to make them happen, and Charles is gonna tell you all the wonderful things that Waco's doing.
Okay, very good. Mayor and Council, this is obviously a lot of zeros in this project and fantastic for Waco. One of the things that we need to do is provide adequate utility service to this customer, and we need to consider where the water is sourced, that'd be in our Mount Carmel Water Treatment Plant, and then getting it to their front door, which is about five miles direct flight, but about eight, just over eight miles of pipe length. So we have to perform the appropriate calculations and evaluations for service pressure and fire service for all of our existing customers from Mount Carmel all the way to this site, and then try to make a estimate of what future water service we will provide. So when we build infrastructure of this size, we really don't like to go back and do it again in a few years. So this is absolutely an economic large project, but it's also a water large project. When water utilities presents budget, we typically talk about the average customer being about 8,000 gallons a month. This particular project, we talk about 2 million gallons a day. So we're talking about adding 7,500 or so connections, not interspaced across the city, but at a single site that's 8.8 miles away from the source. So lots of preparation and calculations to consider to get this right. And of course, those calculations give us pipe size and where the bottlenecks are and what we need to take care of in order to adequately serve this, this customer. It's just a quick, quick summary of some of the adjacent to the site and immediately adjacent to that utility that will serve GPI. We've got a 36-inch wastewater line, a 30-inch wastewater line, and then onsite we'll have another 30-inch wastewater line and some additional water roadway and storm work that Chris will go into. About $29 million of onsite and adjacent site work. This map just illustrates where all that construction is ongoing. The green line is a City of Waco project, 36-inch sanitary sewer that goes across the interstate and connects to an existing transmission line. The orange line is a separate project. It was actually started first, so you don't typically build sewer lines starting in the middle, but in this particular case, we did. We worked out a public-private partnership project, and constructing that 30-inch water, excuse me, 30-inch sewer line should be finished in March of '24. And then the magenta and blue lines are onsite utilities or adjacent site utilities that Chris will go into detail. Between our water source and this customer, we have identified multiple water lines that need to be upsized in order to provide adequate service now and into the future. And this map generally shows the proposed alignment for a two-phase project for a 24-inch and 30-inch water line project that connects Owen Lane Tower generally to Beverly Drive.
Thanks, Charles. So in addition to the work that's being done offsite at, at Mount Carmel and beyond, there are things that have to happen directly that impact the, the business itself to be able to receive that, the service that's, that's being built out. So you can see here, and this is a different version of the same map that, that Charles was showing us, but you can see here, so City of Waco's project here going under I- So, City of Waco's project here going under I-35 and connecting into an existing transmission sewer. The private entity that's doing its third-party sewer work, the Waco Industrial Foundation, that has its own branch of that 30-inch line that's currently under construction and coming under Gateway Boulevard. And just as a side note, if you, if you've experienced, the Gateway Boulevard is currently closed. It will be reopened very shortly, allowing traffic to be moving throughout Texas Central Park. And then, in addition to the sewer line improvements, there are additional water line improvements that have to be made, too. So, taking the improvements that Charles and his team have been working on in the offsite piece, coming down Texas Central Parkway, the Industrial Foundation is currently working on accepting that and connecting into those improvements off of Texas Central with a new 24-inch waterline that will cross over Flat Creek and come in. And with that, you'll see a new road that is beginning to be built, too, which I will talk through. But collectively, you're looking at, between this segment of the improvements here, the foundation is taking over, this 30-inch piece here, and with the road and all the additional pieces there, it is a significant investment, both on the private and public side, in order to make this work. But projects like this are very unique. They don't happen very often, and when they do, you need to seize the opportunity. And that's where the collaboration, the partnership to make that happen has been what has gotten us across the finish line here. So, I mentioned before, there will be a new road that's constructed coming off of Gateway Boulevard. We have Sheehy Parkway, that is, the first phase of which is now under construction coming off of the existing Alliance Parkway, the first phase of which should be done by September of 2024, coming up to the edge of the Graphic Packaging site. And then, we'll continue on for full completion of the road and improvements by March of 2025. So, from a construction perspective, a very fast timeline for a lot of improvements. This is over a mile of new road construction that's occurring here. You'll notice also, if you've been on Alliance Parkway before, it deadends into a cul-de-sac that will shift, and a new small road is being constructed that will be renamed Salome Court. The foundation was giving a nod to two people within this community that have had tremendous impact and been very generous in giving of their time and service over decades of their lives. So, with that, you will have a brand-new concrete road that will include sidewalks, stormwater, drains, water, sewer, electricity, underground electric for that matter, and natural gas. So, a lot of improvements that are happening in a very narrow area, and then working in partnership with Caterpillar and Brazos Electric Cooperative to get some necessary easements to make this work, too. So, again, it has taken a lot of collaboration between the city and the Utilities Department, and Charles and his team have been wonderful to work with and very collaborative through this process, so thank you for that. So, what does that all mean? I mean, we've talked about a lot of really expensive numbers today, and part of that goes with, earlier this year, the council, the city, the city itself, and McLennan County and MCC all voted to expand TIF number four. With that was to incorporate some of these areas where we know that there will be significant investment over the coming years in order to help seize those opportunities and offset the cost of these infrastructure improvements, but to also know that these projects are going to generate large amounts of new dollars that can be spread throughout the community. And I think that's, that's one of the great opportunities with, with the TERs in this particular project. Looking at, the TERs itself captures 70% of the real property increment for the City of Waco and from McLennan County, and 50% on the MCC side of it. Looking at the impact just on the GPI project, over the first 20 years, the TERs is expected to receive an additional $105 million just through the GPI project. So, that's, that's a pretty impactful number. And when you look at the ROI there, I think it makes, you can make good financial sense of that. There are also other areas of support in which the city and the county are coming together to make this work. Looking at that and the partnership with the Waco McLennan County Economic Development Corporation, there's a proposed $8 million grant to offset the costs of rail and natural gas for, for the project, specifically for Graphic Packaging. There are some tax grants that we're looking at through the business grant process. And typically, we would look at a 10-year project and a 10-year agreement for something like this, but for two reasons. One, because the project is in the tax increment reinvestment zone, the majority of the real property generation is going into the TIF, making it, the value of the real property benefit to the company diminish. So, we're looking at personal property opportunities there in providing a phase-in of real, of personal property taxes through a business grant. So, the city and the county's generation with that and their participation over a 20-year period, with the first 10 years being at 90%, and the second 10 years being at 50%, collectively, that provides a potential $40 million grant award to the company over a 20-year period, with the city's portion being about $6.8 million and the county's portion being about $3.3 million. I'm sorry. The county's being $13 million and the city's being 27 million. But there's also additional revenue that is coming to the city and the county through that process. So, collectively, you'll receive about $10 million between the two entities over that same 20-year period. And this doesn't take into account other revenue sources, such as the inventory taxes that'll be generated through the process. And those dollars generated are exempted out of the business grant. So, everything that we get beyond the 10 million is additional revenue that's not taken into account here. With the TIF, the city has proposed to do a water and wastewater normal industrial rate cap, which would provide up to $5 million back to the company over a six-year window. Fee waivers through the economic development exemption, which is a $1.5 million in savings. And then, the company is interested in pursuing a Texas Enterprise Zone project designation, which doesn't have any fiscal impact on the city. It's just a nomination to the state for that designation, but could result in an additional $1.425 million back to them, which is a reimbursement of the state's portion of sales tax that they've paid through consumables and through the construction process. So, we want, we always want to make sure, when we look at economic development as an investment, and we know that these are public dollars that we are investing in the future, and it's important that we show and we can demonstrate that there is a strong return on investment to the citizens of this community. So, we run an economic impact analysis for every project that we do, and we did a 20-year, because of the terms of the agreement, we did a 20-year impact analysis to this. Collectively, you're looking at a recapture value of, between the Economic Development Corporation grant and the business grants of a 6.5-year payback period and a 10.5% annual rate of return. With that, the, if you think about it, the value of the grants are, over a 20-year period, are actually recaptured within six and a half years. And so, I think that's, that shows a very strong return on investment there. And when you look at, between 2027 and 2046, on the city side of it, you're going to see $25 million worth of new revenue coming into the community. $18 million of that is in new direct property taxes after the TERs allocation, and then $6.8 million in new direct personal property taxes. So, we know that this provide, this will provide a strong return on investment to the community. And then, as I mentioned, Mayor and Bradley and I had a chance to go visit the Kalamazoo, Michigan facility, where they were celebrating that piece of machinery's 100th year anniversary.
Wow.
So, this is, when you think about the equipment that's going in, this is not something that they're just going to pick up and move to another community anytime soon. This is something that it's here to stay indefinitely, which means that it continues to generate personal property taxes indefinitely, too. So, looking at the, what's happening with Graphic Package themselves, just to reorient everyone as to where the project is, and you've probably seen the cranes if you've been driving through Texas Central Park or been near Midway High School. It's off of Texas Central Park and Gateway Boulevard. There's the site layout itself. There will be multiple buildings that are built on the 125 acres, but you can also see that they are utilizing just about every square inch of the property that they can. And we know, we feel that this is, this is great for us in being able to not just sell someone a piece of land and have hundreds of acres that aren't utilized. They're doing a really good job of maximizing the utility of the site. So, here's a, here's a visual of the, of the site itself right now. There's a lot of dirt that's moving, and there are three major projects that are under construction right now. They have a raw materials warehouse that is in construction phase right now, a finished goods warehouse as well. And then, on the front, you have the base for the production mill. So, there are these very large concrete pillars that are being poured right now, and the machine itself will sit on top of that. And to give you a perspective about the size of the machine, it's about the length of a football field. So, very large piece of equipment. And then, the company was kind enough to share some information. So, currently, 40,000 yards of concrete have been poured on the site. 100,000 tons of steel have been installed. And I'll note that all of the steel that's being used and erected has gone through galvanization through zinc power locally. So, a great utilization of a local supplier for that. They will receive more than 600 cargo containers on the site. Most of that's going to be equipment coming in, and the pieces of equipment for the machine itself coming in through Europe. $126 million has been spent so far on construction. $30 million of that has been contracts with local suppliers. And then, you can see a list of the current area vendors that they've, that they're, that they're working with now, and that list is only going to continue to expand as they, as they build out the site. And at peak, they will have 800 workers on site. And a large majority of those are people that they're hiring between different trades to come in, but also individuals that they brought in from outside the community who are staying in hotels and utilizing local services. So, there's a good, strong economic impact that's happening even now during the construction process. So, when it's complete, this is a visual of what it'll look from, from the outside, very similar to what we've experienced when we saw the Michigan facility. And then, looking at the future milestones, they're, they will begin commissioning their equipment in February 2025 and hope to be fully operational in December 2025. Very short timeframe for such a large project.
Any questions or comments?
I'll jump in with a couple of comments. Chris, for the viewers at home, can you tell people what Graphic Packaging does? I get that question a lot.
Absolutely. So, Graphic Packaging is the world's largest company involved in the recycling and reproduction of paperboard. So, if you think about that, you, you receive lots of packages at your home these days that come in cardboard boxes. Those cardboard boxes are recycled every week in the City of Waco, and they go to the recycling facility. Those boxes come to Graphic Packaging. They take them, they shred them up and go through a process where they make them into a new pulp. And then, that paper that is made is a very thin cardboard and becomes your cereal box, your cake box, your tissue box, all of those things that you, that you buy at the grocery store.
Great, pretty cool deal. I haven't, I didn't go up with y'all to Kalamazoo, but I went up on another investment that I was looking at. That is a huge facility up there. And when you say 100 years on just one machine, and they're putting that same thing in, in Waco, so that's impressive. Just the benefits of economic development, that's been a goal of this council and this administration of city management, to really capitalize on the economic development opportunities that we have in Waco right now. And I appreciate your team pulling this together. It's not like you're sitting by the phone waiting for people to call. You guys are out working this stuff. And I appreciate, I really appreciate how this has come together. I'm thankful for it. Because not only the economic development, but the complexities and the infrastructure requirements that it takes to bring this kind of company and what this community is doing in this particular case with water and wastewater. And thanks, Charles, for the, for the mappage and the explanation there. It really, it really helps bring it to life. Big company, big win for Central Texas. And just the ripple effect that you talked about there, Chris, is great. The 200 jobs, good-paying jobs, a billion-dollar tax base, the 20-year economic impact of $1.2 billion in taxes and sales and payroll. And really, I think from the adjacent businesses benefiting from this new infrastructure that's going in, I don't think we talked about that either. I think that's going to help existing and new businesses. And I didn't really think about it either until that one slide about local vendors, the peripheral benefit of local vendors being involved with Graphic Packaging is also great. Great ROI, and I liked how you demonstrated the seven-year payback, which is phenomenal. So, I'm really excited to see this move along, and thanks for the, thanks for the presentation.
The, oh, do you mind? We were about to talk. Oh, I hate that. I'm so sorry. I did want to highlight something for the council, and that is that Chris referred to Wedmec Agreement and some other agreements with the company. Those will be coming forth to the council for consideration in the early part of 2024. So, you'll have additional action in front of you over the next couple of months.
All I was going to say is thank you guys for being here. And we appreciate your time.
I just, I just want to say that, you know, this project, and particularly the infrastructure piece of it, has given, I think, our team a, a new perspective and appreciation for the work that your team, your public works team, your Utilities Department does on a daily basis. You know, it's, it's a $20 million project, which is the largest that our team has worked on from an infrastructure perspective. But that's, that's a drop in the bucket compared to what your team works on, on a daily basis. And so, thank, thank them for the, for the work that they do every day, because it's yeoman's work, for sure.
That's a great point. I love that our economic development structure is everybody coming together to try to make this community stronger, to make our economy stronger. Charles Leest is an amazing leader in our community, and he's juggling a lot of very crazy, difficult, complex infrastructure projects. And I really appreciate your fortitude and acumen to get us over the finish line on these projects, Charles, and to all the public works and utilities team that see Leest in the back. I see a lot of our staff members here. So, thank you to all of our staff members who are working really hard to ensure that we have the water and the utilities that we need to get this over the finish line. And I also just, again, love that the way our community comes together from our chamber to the WEF, to the county, to really ensure that our economy is growing in a way that is moving our city forward. So, thank you so much, guys.
All right. Last, but certainly not least, I'm going to bring Lisa and Huel back up on their work session 976. Hopefully, we got the right slide deck. 15 minutes. Get ready for takeoff.
And I apologize.
No problem. That's always happens.
Okay, there we go. This is the right one.
I'm like an auctioneer to get through all of this in however many minutes Bradley gave you.
Through it, all right. There we go. Okay, so as mentioned earlier, that I started to mention, convention center update on attendance trends, hotel occupancy, short-term rentals, convention performance, and celebration weekend review. And then Hoel's going to talk about visitor data, employment, non-airline traffic, and current priorities at the airport. This slide is our attendance reported by 14 different attractions and consistent with our last report a few months ago that we provided to you. It shows our attractions are on track to meet the projected 1.9 million total attendance for 2023. Meeting this goal would be a 3% increase year-over-year and would mark the highest annual attendance record since the 2019 pandemic, showing steady growth. This graph shows the total attendance at each attraction this quarter to date. These percentages remain steady and match the numbers shown in our summer update to you, meaning our attractions have been well-attended from the end of summer through the fall. The top five attractions continue to maintain their ranking with Magnolia, Cameron Park Zoo, and the Dr. Pepper Museum leading the way. This chart reflects the various home markets of our visitors. This breakdown is similar to our last update. However, Houston and Austin flipped, with Houston coming in second, moving from 8% to 12.91. Austin maintained a little over eight. And Los Angeles and Tyler moved up a bit, and Shreveport is new to the top 10, coming in at number eight. To help see Waco's reach, here's some, here's a data map that shows the visitor home area. The largest percentage of our visitors obviously come from Texas. But as you can see, our guests travel from all over the U.S. to visit us. The visual impact of this is astounding. This type of data is critical because it helps us with target marketing into areas where we have some visitation and growth potential. In-state versus out-of-state visitors. As displayed on the previous slide, the majority of our visitors do come from Texas. This update is September through November, and we observe 25% of our guests visiting from out-of-state, which is the light blue at the top. This chart does show that we tend to increase in-state visitation during this time of year, and we can also see a slight overall decrease in out-of-state visitation since January of '21. This is a metric that we will keep an eye on and determine if it becomes a trend. This chart takes our visitor data and shows how many visitors stayed overnight versus how many made a day trip to Waco. Overnight is the darker blue, and the day trip is the lighter blue. As you can see, there has been a sharp rise in day trips to Waco since September. Decline during this period is expected. However, we're going to monitor the sharp decline below 50% to better understand why. This trend could be also related to Baylor Football Games hosting eight home games since September, Magnolia Celebration, and 10 total home games for men and women's basketball. But again, we're going to follow that. Visitor spending. So the graph on the left shows what categories our guests spend their money on when they visit our community. The categories and percentages remain relatively unchanged since your last update. And the box to the right shows the average spend per guest on each category. The highest average spend is accommodations, followed by attraction spending, and food and gas are the highest spend categories. Here we have a hotel occupancy slide. We've presented this occupancy data and as well as a average daily rate data that we're going to show you in a couple of slides in a rolling 12-month average graph to remove spikes and dips, resulting in a much smoother line, making it easier to recognize the trends. In terms of occupancy, we're slightly down for the period, specifically looking at October compared to '21 and '22. However, we are 7% higher than the Texas state average. This is another area we will monitor and have a better trend, idea of trending at our next update to you. Worthily of noting, though, our all-time high occupancy was 82% in March of 2019.
And Lisa, is that, I mean, is part of the occupancy being impacted by supply that's increased in the market since 2019? I mean, is that, could that have an impact?
Not sure yet. I think we have two new systems, Zartico and Placer. And with the onboarding of the new hotel rooms, I think we need a little more time to understand what the trend is trying to tell us. Because we've kind of been all over the place with the, with COVID and travel. This slide is the top five average hotel occupancy statewide. When we brought it to you a few months back, El Paso was leading the way at 71.7, Fort Worth Arlington was 69.2, Austin was 69.1, and Waco came in at 68.8. So you can see that we're now, we're tied with Fort Worth and pretty much relatively the same as last time.
I had a quick question on this, too, Lisa. The, maybe it's, I guess it's the same one that the mayor just asked, because I had my, in my notes, that the percentage will likely come down based on the new hotels coming online, right?
It may, correct.
With even Cambria and the Marriott and.
Yes.
All in the end, there's a couple of ones.
Yeah, we're going to monitor it closely.
Okay. And maybe, I don't know if it's possible to do a room count, that may not be. Let me, I'll think through that. I'll follow up with you on it. Thanks.
Here is the rolling 12-month as well for the average daily rate, known as ADR. It is the room revenue divided by rooms sold. That's how it's calculated. Our average daily rate in October was up 4% over last year, making October 23 our highest monthly average daily rate in history with the 4,000 hotel room inventory. Contributing to a successful October was two Baylor Home Games, Texas Tech and Iowa, Ironman, and Celebration. It's important to note that this ADR represents all hotels and motels within the city limits, from the lower price end to the higher price end. We'll continue to monitor this data as well and report out on future updates. Seeing that we will not have our next update until May after the eclipse, we wanted to give you a sneak peek into the short-term rentals for April 2024 compared to April 23. In April of 24, we will experience that total solar eclipse weekend. And there are currently 700 available rooms for April 2024. This number fluctuates as owners decide to rent or not. For the eclipse weekend in '24 compared to '23, the current booked listings are up 290%. The average daily rate is up 460%, or, excuse me, $460, which is 104%. And the revenue currently booked is over 1.1 million, which is up 616%. So stay tuned till next May, and we'll have a better update for that.
So you can look in the fut, you can look and see what the, I guess I asked that question in a different presentation today. I think it's good, that's great data.
Dan and his team, I guess this is a third system that we've acquired. It's called AirDNA, and it's a new system that we have. So we're, we're understanding it and learning the capabilities. But yeah, we're gathering the data from that system.
Super, thanks, Lisa.
Just a sneak peek on the convention side. The top boxes, you'll see leads, and the bottoms, you'll see definite. So our leads have grown by over 43% this year. A lead is a group expressing interest in our booking but does not have a contract signed at that point. Majority of leads are purchased, or, excuse me, are pursued by us, but some do contact us directly. Leads include future years, 25, 2025, 26, and 27. Our definites are booked, are up over 4% over last year. This is an indicator that we're focusing on growing. Convention staff on average is tracking about three out of four leads are booked. So that's a pretty high statistic. Overall, our leads and definites are growing, and we're going to keep monitoring that over the next six months or five months when we come back. Out-of-state convention usage. The lighter blue bar represents out-of-state visitors, and the darker blue represents... Did I say that wrong? Yeah, lighter blue is out-of-state, and darker blue is, excuse me, this is 2022 and '23. I'm totally off. '22 is the out-of-state, and '23 is the light blue, and the '22 is the dark blue. And so what this is telling us is that nine out of the 11 months this year, we had more out-of-state visitors than we had in-state visitors, which is really great. We're going to be closely monitoring this data as well. Can tell I've read these slides over and over. The convention center data, we break these into priority levels. We call them P1s through P5s. P1s are the largest, with 300 room peak nights and over 500 rooms for the total event and etc. And we can see that over this last year, we have increased our P1s by 11 events. Our P2s are down two, but our overall attendance is up about 10,000 attendees. So I think that's really great. Staff's focusing on the P1s.
Yeah.
Okay, we wanted to give you a sneak peek at the celebration event that we had back in October. We pulled this information from a system called Zartico, which is a destination operating system. And they define a traveler by somebody who traveled over 50 miles, stayed over two hours when they visited, and they visited at least one point of impact. So for the celebration weekend, we had 65% of the attendees were visitors, and 43% of those attendees were from outside of Texas. And you can see the 2022 origin markets versus '23, Houston popped up. And then, of course, we have about five cities there that made it in the top 10 for the first time. Our hotel occupancy for the weekend of October 19 through October 21 was great. It remained in the 80% range for the weekend, with average daily rate spiking $30 higher than the monthly average. The average visitor spend on accommodations for the weekend was $155 higher than the previous weekend. So celebration had a positive impact on our hotel occupancy, ADR, and overall economy. Our CVB team explored location-based marketing and created a geofence around the celebration event, pushing marketing to smartphones. The marketing campaign drove attendees to visit the mobile welcome center that was on-site and that allowed staff to talk to the attendees about what else they could do when they were in our city. They had 498 clicks on the ad that was pushed to their phone, 169,000 impressions. So on average, probably one, somebody saw it six times. And they also were selling Waco merchandise through the mobile welcome center and sold about $3,000 in inventory, which is great. And now I'm going to pass it over to Hoel to give an update on the airport.
All right. Well, good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I will talk about airport data and kind of see, discuss these quarterly trends as we see them fit. So along with the convention center and some of the tourism data that we've collected, we're able to kind of establish a perimeter around the airport. And so this, these numbers here, they are very high, but they are for the entire airport property. So keep in mind, we have eight airport-related businesses, as well as the terminal building and then those associated activities that take place. So we have 270,000 total visitors for 2023. That's year-to-date, and that's the most visits recorded. And we provided some historical data to give us that context. Visitor data, again, much like the tourism presentation, we're able to identify what cities are our top 10 visitors. Salt Lake City, Utah, being, for the past three months, being the highest there. That may be because of Utah State and BYU's game against Baylor University. But, you know, that's, those are assumptions, as well as the top 10 that's there. The top 10 states that visit our airport. And again, these may or may not include deployments. We'll talk about deployment data as we move through this presentation. But California is number one by far. And that kind of coincides with some of the airline data that we see from some of our visitors. Commercial deployments, here's some, some data that you've seen in the past. To highlight, we have a 71% occupancy rate year-to-date, which is a, is a fairly good occupancy rate for airports our size. And as our measure against our peer airports, we are kind of right in the middle of the pack with Abilene, San Angelo, and GRK, or Colleen down the road. And again, our American Airlines numbers, you can see where our trends kind of flow minus 2019 numbers. But you can see where we're still in the middle of that pack, considering the three flights a day. Non-airline traffic, this is general aviation traffic, too, including military traffic. So again, this is another source of revenue for the airport as we see these, this increase or this flow of traffic into the airport. They purchase fuels, we have landing fees that are associated with that. So we feel like it's an important data set to represent to city council as to how, how we are pairing up here. Our current priorities, obviously, to improve our guest experience, we have unveiling of our terminal modernization building completion next Friday, December 15, at 11:00 a.m., which will include the tours of the public art, as well as just terminal tours as, in general. And we'll also reveal our new logo. We are currently finalizing our RFP process for food and beverage service that'll also go in the newly renovated food and beverage space there at the airport. And we are discussing with the tourism group to bring in a merchandising kiosk for, for sale, sell items to travelers' last-minute purchases there. And additionally, we have scheduled two conferences for airline development coming up, one in the spring, one in the fall. And we hope to continue those conversations with airline partners to add service to our community. Future updates, like Lisa mentioned earlier, we're going to bring an additional update or a new update in May of '24, and then we'll have our fall update in November of '24 as well. Thank you. Any questions?
I'll go super fast. So Hoel, you said, thank you for your presentation, you and Lisa both. We've been, we've been in the middle of the pack for a while. What will it take for us to get to the top of the pack? I mean, and I, don't tell me more flights, because we already know the answer to that. We already know what's going on. Is that the only thing that is hindering us from surpassing our peer cities? Or is it the fact that they have multiple carriers?
My opinion is that we have passenger or citizen utilization of our terminal building that they're leaking to other airports, DFW, Austin. And so I think that if we can find a way to encourage those passengers that are using other airports in our area to use Waco Regional Airport, that's a, it's kind of an easy, it's an easy fix.
That's why Waco campaign we've been talking about for.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Just one quick question. Great data, by the way, very dynamic. Can you, this didn't match with the presentation we got earlier this afternoon. Can you send that to the council members? I mean, there was just some updates on the slides. I just want to get the latest and greatest.
I verified the one in the packet is correct, but we can send the new one out.
Okay.
Thank you to Lisa and to Hoel. My opinion, my opinion. I've been to the Colleen Airport. And now that we're renovating and upgrading our airport, I think that's going to make a major difference in people feeling like, hey, this is an airport I want to come to. The Colleen Airport was very nice at that time, and I enjoyed being there, and I enjoyed flying from there. But we, Waco Airport is stepping up to the plate. I believe in the new renovation, and I think that's going to make a lot of people come and feel welcome and wanting to use our new modern airport. So I think that's going to help us, and hopefully it does. Also, your staff is very friendly and helpful. I have found that to be very helpful when I go. And I miss the, the gentleman that was there that was polishing our shoes. But other than that, our staff is super, super helpful and, and friendly. So thank you, Hoel, for getting your staff to make folks feel welcome at the Waco Airport.
Thank you to our team. Great staff, great data and great staff. Tourism is an important component to Waco's economy, so is our airport. And look forward to continuing to implement strategies to improve both this economic sector and its amenity.
Are there any requests for future gen items? Not? Then we will recess executive session. We will recess the work session and reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by the city secretary at 5:29.
Notice this hereby, given that the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. Attorney briefing, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071. Litigation regarding possible use of per and polyfluor alcohol substance and foam at airport. Petition for consent of creation of Woodway Municipal Utility District Mud Number One, and petition for water services and sanitary sewer services for said mud. Real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072. And economic development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087. We are now in executive session.